Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Here.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Here.
Council President Pridgen?
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Present.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Coram is present.
All right, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
Isaiah, chapter fifty-eight is a wonderful and fascinating and incredibly relevant scripture. Picking it up about halfway through verse nine. "If you do away with the yoke of oppression with a pointing finger and malicious talk, and if you spend yourselves in behalf of the hungry and satisfy the needs of the oppressed, then your light will rise in the darkness and your night will become like the noonday. The Lord will guide you always; he will satisfy your needs in a sun-scorched land and will strengthen your frame. You will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail." And then it sums up in verse twelve. "Your people will rebuild the ancient ruins and will raise up the age-old foundations. You will be called repairer of broken walls, restorer of streets with dwellings." I love that scripture and I love that it gives sort of an if-then clause. If you do this, then you will be like this. And then that verse as it closes about rebuilding ancient ruins and age-old foundations in a city like Buffalo, New York. And repair of broken walls, repair of things that have broken down that once provided safety and maybe now need to be repaired. And restorer of streets with dwellings. It's a beautiful picture of the kind of city I think that all of us want to live in. A place where those well-watered gardens happen, where those, the light shines and darkness is dispelled. So I want to pray for you all today as you consider the things that put that into the DNA of the new Buffalo as it's rebuilt. Let's pray. Father, thank you for your goodness. Thank you for these words from Isaiah. They referred to a city and cities thousands of years ago, but we take them for us today. Lord, do you know all the things that are happening in the city and all the things each of these nine council members have to do every day on behalf of a better Buffalo for all moving forward? And Lord, you also know the pitfalls, the discouragements, the things that need to be worked through. You know the policies and procedures that need to be put in place. I pray that you give them wisdom, wisdom beyond any of their own, collective wisdom, as iron sharpens iron between the nine of them. Thank you, Father, that your hand is on them, that in this position that you've promised that you'll give them wisdom as they lean into you. And Lord, for today's session, we ask your specific presence. And Lord, I pray even now, as the repair of broken walls and the restorer of streets with dwellings falls on each of these, Lord, let the neighborhoods of Buffalo be better because these have chosen to serve. And we pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers, do you have any memorials? Councilmember Wingo?
Mr. Chair, thank you for acknowledging me regarding the memorials today. I have two, one of which I would like to say to the family of Flossie Mae Chappelle that you are in our thoughts and prayers. Mother Chappelle, as she was affectionately called at the Faith Baptist Church, she was a stalwart. She is one of those longstanding members who was a fixture at that church. And as I was a minister of music at the time, for about ten years at Faith Baptist Church, I would be on the organ and she'd be over on her second row, all the way to the right or the left, depending on which way you're looking at it. And she'd break out in song. And it did not matter what, it did not matter what I was playing, it did not matter what key I was in, Mama Chappelle would start singing. And you'd hear her humming at first, and then she'd just break out and she'd even interrupt pastors. She'd pass, she'd look at it just like, Mama Chappelle. But she was absolutely loved. She will be sorely missed to her children, Laney and Auntie V. Our heart goes out to you and the loss of all of our Mama Chappelle. Then also, just today, we laid to rest Brother Samuel L. Jackson III here at the Faith Baptist Church again. And Brother Jackson was a Mason. He was also an usher. And when I tell you when people walked into the Faith Baptist Church, they felt welcome because he was that kind of man that made you feel, number one, safe, and he also made you feel welcome. Like, this is my house. You are right over here. So I just want to say to the family of Brother Jackson, you're, hey, we have you in our thoughts and prayers, and he will be sorely missed. And for all of those folks who are at the service today, it was a beautiful, beautiful, home-going Pastor James R. Banks II. He really, really preached. He really, really preached a wonderful message, and we thank God for all of you. And again, Mr. Chair, thank you for this opportunity to express our love and support for those families.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Councilmember Wyatt?
Today, I want to ask for the prayers for my family who used to live in Buffalo. Deacon Jimmy Bryant was a longtime member of Bishop Anderson's Church, Prince of Peace. For many years, he was a deacon, a trustee. He was a taught Sunday school. He and his wife Diane moved to Atlanta and their two children, Sonia and Sean, they joined the church. And the same things he did at Prince of Peace, he continued to work in this church in Atlanta. And so I just want to remember him on this day, a longstanding citizen of the city of Buffalo. And on this day, I want to dedicate this service to this, these proceedings to him in his memory. Just a good, good man, a great father, grandfather, and a great mentor, a great Christian man that we lost, and we just keep the family in prayer. Thank you.
Anyone else? Of course, we remember Lorna C. Hill, who, more than an artist, more than an actress, more than a director. I mean, there's just so many names and titles that we could put. This city has lost a great person, her family, and of course, the arts community. We have suffered in the last, over the last year, two giants, actually, in the theater field. And especially African-American, two of the giants with the loss of Lorna, Lorna C. Hill. And Alvin Holman, member of Tribetho, who was active in every choir that he was asked to be. Very nice man. He goes to join his wife and to rest. And so we remember those names that have been called. And also for our frontline workers during this pandemic. And of course, for any man and woman who have given their life for our country or the freedom of other countries since our last meeting. We pause for a moment of silence. Thank you all. On a motion by Mr. Revere, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on June twenty-third, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files before you? Not taken where you're right to pause the meeting to review anything that you may not have had a time to review? Hearing none, we will hear the entire agenda from the top.
Item number one, 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Annual Action Plan.
Motion. I'm sorry. Motion to send items twenty-two to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number three, Dexter's Hat Caps and Things, Broadway Market Lease.
Motion to approve items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number ten, notification serial.
Motion to receive and file item, item ten.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number eleven, change order for CPO Northland Inspection.
Motion to approve items eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Can you scroll down?
Councilmember Revere, I think nineteen's actually going to be sent to committee if you'd like.
So up to item eighteen then.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, encroachment on City Right-Away, 155 Richmond Avenue.
Motion to send to committee, to CD.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number twenty, permission to accept funds and enter into agreement.
Motion to approve items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto? Councilmember Galumbek?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, approval to purchase new police vehicles.
Motion to send to finance items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number thirty-two, contract between the city of Buffalo Endeavor Health Services.
This is a motion to approve.
With the amendments that will be read into the record. Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the item that is before us regarding the contract between Endeavor Health Services and the city of Buffalo for the Crisis Intervention Team. There are two amendments that I thought will have been emailed, but I don't have them, but I'll read them into the record. First of all, the supervision of the licensed clinical social workers and the licensed mental health counselors who will be employed through Endeavor will be supervised by a licensed clinical social worker with the necessary credential so that we would not be unethical or inappropriate. Next, there will be a report that will be given to, in section two of this contract. In the scope of work, there will be a piece that speaks specifically to ensuring that the common council receives a copy of the report from the Crisis Intervention Team to ensure that we have data to discuss at the upcoming quarterly police oversight committees. Therefore, we should have at least three reports generated this year that will be addressed during the police oversight committees. And once those reports are submitted to the common council, the committee that they will go to clearly and naturally would be the police oversight committee. So those two amendments, the Buffalo Police have already agreed to amend in the contract. And with those amendments, the motion would be to, to approve this contract.
All right, so the motion is to approve as amended, second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number thirty-three.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One, one, one more piece that I want to make sure that the community is aware. This did not cost the city of Buffalo a dime to have these mental health workers, these licensed clinical social workers to work for the city of Buffalo. This did not cost the city of Buffalo a dime. Endeavor secured the grant, the one-year grant for this. And this is why I believe it's so necessary for us to get them up and running as soon as possible because that one year will be up this time next year. So we want to get them up and running and make sure that the data proves that this is a best practice. So I want everyone to know that this did not cost the city any more money. We did not change the police budget or increase it for this. It, this is something that Endeavor found the money for and got for themselves so that this can be done. And I wanted to say I thank Endeavor for taking the initiative and being diligent and ensuring that they found the funding for this program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number thirty-three, drug asset forfeiture.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number thirty-four, Buffalo Firefighter Retirement Incentive Program for Injured Members.
Motion to approve items thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Excuse me, this is Karen Gordon, Assistant Corporation Counsel. Can we return to item number thirty-three? It was received and filed. I believe this is monies that might be available to the city for, to actually accept.
Can we bring the item up on the screen, please? No, Ben. We have the actual item. Drug app.
Just give me one moment. I'll hold up.
Yes, this item should be approved. It's talking about money that will be placed in the accounts of, I think, BPD. Sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars based on the Drug Enforcement Administration and the Drug Asset Forfeiture Agreement that we have with the state.
This majority leader, historically, we have always received and filed these communications which come to us regularly from BPD.
All right. Did you get that, Karen? Normally, we would receive and file.
We file them usually.
Yeah, we normally, the asset forfeiture.
Okay, if that's what you normally do, that's fine. I've done some of these as approvals in the past. And so I just want to make sure that we do what's supposed to be done, you know, consistently each time and, you know, not change it up because I've done some of these as approvals in the past.
Yeah, I, I don't recall. I do recall receiving and filing the asset forfeiture items.
Okay, so that's fine. Then we can do as you customarily do.
So we'll, we'll let it stand. I'm looking at the item now. And because the funds were already received and already deposited, we, if, if they were asking, I might understand that they were asking us for permission to receive funds, but this is not asking the council for anything. It looks like more information.
Okay, great.
That's correct, Council President.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, though. Thank you. Don't let us, don't let us slip. Next item.
Item number thirty-seven, liquor license notice.
Motion to receive and file items thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number thirty-nine, appoint assistant legislative aide.
Motion to adopt items thirty-nine and forty.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Item number forty-one, notice of appointment, temp provisional on permanent.
Motion to send to CD items, is it forty-one and forty-two?
Forty-one is civil service.
Oh, excuse me, forty-one, forty-two, forty-one, civil service?
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number forty-two, Minnesota Block Club Letter to Councilmember Wyatt.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number forty-three, letter in support of Horn's pension status and eligibility.
This is a late file. This item is before us.
We've received that it can be either sent to committee or, which I think it should in case she would like to speak on it.
What committee would you send it to?
Where, where, where do we, are we parking all of the Carol Horn, which committee?
Council President, I believe, and Majority Leader, legislation. I'm sorry, but it's in regards to her pension, so it could go to finance. It depends on which avenue you guys want to take it.
Yeah, I think that because we already have the request in one committee, we, we put them in the same committee so that if, if there's a discussion, that discussion goes around all of, all of, in the same committee.
Council President, it is still split. You also have the original items concerning Carol Horn's pension and civil service.
Yeah, that was, yeah, let's put them, I don't care where we send them, as long as we're sending everything to one committee. So it's not confusing to the public.
We'll send it to legislation then.
Chief of Staff, you have the other one. You said in.
And as city clerk points out as well, there are several items spread across a couple of committees. You have civil service, ledge, and police oversight.
This was my suggestion. Let's send them all to, to ledge because there's other items coming forward. So we don't confuse the public and people don't have to, you know, get online for two different committees, if that's okay.
We can get the other, we can get the other ones pulled out.
Yeah, yeah, ask the chairman to pull them and send them over. Thank you.
Just want to go to legislation then.
Thank you, sir.
Council President, if I can just get a second on it, sorry, forty-three.
Goodbye, Councilmember Mitch Noakowski.
Item number forty-four, monthly city hall incident report.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number forty-five, eliminate 2018 traffic fees and address unequal traffic enforcement in Buffalo.
Motion to send items forty-five and forty-six to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number forty-seven, caucus meeting transcription.
Motion and sent, motion receiving file items forty-seven through fifty.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number one, item number fifty-one, Plymouth Crossroads Statistics, sorry.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by the President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number fifty-two, supplemental info for special use permit for six Highgate.
Motion to send to legislation, items fifty-two and fifty-three.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you. We're on item fifty-three. This is the Partnership for the Public Goods Community Policing Report. I filed this item because I wanted to ensure, and this item actually should go to the police oversight committee as well. I filed this item because there was an item forty-six for the Criminal Justice Alarming Despair Report by Open Buffalo back in 2013. This item was filed, but I would like for the newest data to be included as well because I believe they do a great job of correlating data. And I want to make sure that this item goes to police oversight as well for item number fifty-three. And if we have to revisit item number forty-six, so that goes to the police oversight committee as well so that these items are kind of one of them packaged together. But, you know, it is what it is, and I would like those sent to police oversight committee if possible.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Council President, just so councilmembers are aware, you only can send it to one committee, which legislation meets more than police oversight, so that's why legislation is selected. However, you can't send two because it could have two different motions. If it go to police oversight, have a different motion than what's in legislation or whatever other committee you choose. So that's why.
Okay, that, that is very, very clear, and thank you for the explanation. I would prefer if my colleagues agree that both those items, if we rescind the motion for, for McLaughlin to go to police oversight as well as the item fifty-three to go to police oversight. That way, they can be discussed, opined, and then motioned in that committee so that the community has an opportunity to look at the data in one committee again and then comment on it and see how we go from there. But I prefer that they go to police oversight.
Okay, so those, with, so give me the item numbers, forty.
Item fifty-three, we just motioned for that to go to ledge if we could rescind that, and then motioned for that to go to police oversight as well as item number forty-six.
All right, let's revisit forty-six right there.
Item number forty-six, Open Buffalo Report on Criminal Justice.
Motion to rescind the previous motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Motion now is to send to the police oversight.
Second by Councilmember Wingo. Revisit item number fifty-three, please.
Community policing report.
Motion to rescind the previous motion.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Motion now is to send to police oversight.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Not a problem.
Item number fifty-four, B and CRC letter for CB, CDBG Funds and Emergency Solutions.
Motion to send to finance.
My Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number fifty-five, comments on the draft consolidation plan and annual action plan.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number fifty-six, letter to NFTA.
This is a late file.
Is this a receiving file or is this going to a committee?
Receiving file. It depends on my colleagues, but this could be receiving file or we can send it to CD. This is just a support letter for the renaming of the Utica Metro Rail Station, sent to the Niagara Frontier Transit Authority to show our support or my support personally for the renaming to a Mastin District resident, Mr. Robert Coles, who was a renowned architect and who left his mark here in the city of Buffalo. And he passed away this last May. And I believe that Mayor Brown is proposing to the NFTA that we rename this Utica Station that he designed after him as an homage to him and all the work that he's did and what he's all contributed to the city of Buffalo. So it could be received and filed, or we can send it to CD for further discussion. It, I, I don't, I don't care.
You filed it, so whatever you want to do.
Well, we can receive and file. I just want to make sure that it's on the record that we absolutely are in full support unequivocally of renaming the Utica Metro Rail Station, the Robert T. Coles Metro Rail Station, of which, of course, if I said it before, I'll say it again, that he designed amongst other buildings like the Frank Meriwether Library and other, what do you call those things where you see them and you know exactly where they are, landmarks? There it is. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so that's a receiving file. Did I give you a second on that?
No, Council President.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Committee, Civil Service, item number one, appoint senior staff supervisor.
Civil Service is to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Second by Councilmember here. All right, keep going.
Through, I'm sorry?
No, keep going. I didn't see that there was more on there.
Okay, so I guess items one through and including twenty-seven.
Second by Councilmember Revere.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, notices of appointment, temp provisional on permanent.
Motion is to receive and file items numbers twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Second by Councilmember Revere.
Community Development, item number thirty, Heritage Point.
Is this?
This is without recommendation, and I apologize because the iPad wasn't working. I can't. This is the item was, uh, is without recommendation, and I apologize because of the iPad wasn't working, I can't see my colleagues. So, um, if you wanted to speak, if you could, maybe Mister President, uh, or somebody, uh, make the announcement.
Yep, I don't, I don't see any hands up, I can only see half of my screen, uh, but if somebody wants to speak, just say it, but I don't see anything, so you can make the motion.
Um, I'm not sure what, uh, this was, uh, sent without recommendation, I'm not sure what, uh.
Is this an adopt or approve on this?
This is, uh, co- Council President, this is the one that was originally stated that it was elicit, but it's Fillmore, so I think it's Councilmember Noakowski what he wants to decide on this item.
I think the motion was to approve.
Okay, motion then to approve.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number thirty one, Thirty One Forty Eight Main Street.
Uh, motion is to send this to the Legislation Committee.
Second by Councilmember Farrelittle.
Item number thirty two, Report a Cell for Five Nineteen Dodge.
Motion is to approve. Motion is to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number thirty three, School Speed Zone from Residents.
Motion to receive and file thirty three, thirty four, and thirty five.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number thirty six, Report a Cell Three Sixty Eight Enslie.
Um, because this is a discharge, we, we're gonna have to take fifty eight out of order to, for the discharge, right?
Correct.
Let's go to item fifty eight so that we can then deal with item thirty six.
Item number fifty nine, Discharge Item Twenty Dash Two Ninety Three from C D.
Motion to adopt the discharge.
Second by Councilmember Farrelittle.
Back to Community Development, Item Number Thirty Six, Report a Cell Three Sixty Eight Enslie.
To approve. Second by, uh, Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Great, Legislation Committee, Item Number Thirty Seven, Food Store License Fifteen Sixty South Park.
Legislation.
Mitch Noakowski, no, Farrelittle.
Councilmember, are you with us?
Uh, motion is to approve.
Okay, I think it's approved with conditions, um, um, Scanlon, Councilmember Scanlon.
Yeah, we're gonna approve this with the condition that there's, um, for one year, um, closing at eleven P M.
Okay, uh, approved with conditions, just read into the record by the councilman.
And we'll revisit it a year from now.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Bowman. Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number thirty eight, Sidewalk Cafe Five Thirty Seven Main.
Councilmember. Doing legislation. Councilmember, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, I was having, I was breaking up, it was going in and out, uh, the motion is to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Council President, uh, Councilmember Galumbek.
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number thirty nine, Special Use Fifty Five Rhode Island for Outdoor Dining.
Motion is to send to ledge.
All right, it's, it's gonna, oh, so it's gonna be recommitted to ledge, second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number forty, Two, Two Thousand Eighteen Food Store License Renewals.
Motion to receive and file items forty, forty one, forty two, and forty three.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Resolutions, Item Number Fifty Seven, Fee Waiver for E V A Farmers Market Street Close, Closure.
Motion to approve items fifty seven and fifty eight.
Second by Councilmember Farrelittle.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yeah.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number fifty nine, oh, we did that, I'm sorry, Item Number Sixty, Commission on Citizen Rights and Community Relations.
Motion, uh, to adopt the resolves remainder to legislation, item sixty and sixty, that's sixty, sixty one, and sixty two.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number sixty three, Submission of Names to Buffalo Police Department Police Task Force.
That's items, which one was it?
Sixty three.
Sixty three, motion to adopt items sixty three and sixty four.
Second by Councilmember Farrelittle.
Item number sixty five, Public Availability of Labor Contracts with the City of Buffalo.
Motion to adopt the resolves and remainder to legislation for items sixty five and sixty six.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, Councilmember Wyatt has a.
Thank you, Mister President, um, as we discuss reforms, um, this is a, a very important piece, um, as far as transparency. Um, in the past, the, the contracts have been negotiated in agreement with the union and the administration in private, and then it comes to the council at the time of approval. Um, I think that this process, improving this process, bringing it forward early on, um, I think is very helpful to the public being apprised as well as the council of what has been agreed upon, because many times we get this at the last minute, and we certainly can't go through the entire contract in a short period of time when they're looking for the approval, e- almost immediately. Um, but again, this adds to transparency, this is what has been called, is called for as far as the reforms, and I think this is a very good step in the right direction as far as transparency, keeping the, the public apprised, thank you, Mister President, thank you for your.
And I know yesterday, um, one of the colleagues did ask a question, I think is important for the public to know, that this does not change that the administration and the unions would negotiate the contract, and of course, um, everybody can't be in the room, so this, that's not changed that, this is just when we receive the, um, recommendation, um, to approve the contract, that we received the entire contract and not a summary. Councilmember Wingo?
Yes, Mister Chair, I want to make sure that we address this concern. What is the council's authority or power or leverage when it comes to the contract that has already been agreed upon between both the union and perv?
So there, it, it, it is not, uh, fully ratified until the council, uh, makes a move, so they negotiate, then they send it to us, so we, we still have authority to say no.
Okay, so I, I was, I wanted to make sure that was very, very, very clear that the, uh, authority that we have is at the back end, basically if we ask for something that is not included, we do have the authority to not pass it, but then what happens after we don't pass or adopt or approve that, that, that contract?
Corporation Council, I'm gonna answer this, but if I'm wrong, you can correct me, it goes back, they go back, and they have to deal with, and usually it hasn't occurred, uh, in my time, or but from my understanding, if it did and we stated on the record why, then it goes back for renegotiation, am I correct, uh, Corporation Council?
Correct, sir.
That's the. So, um, uh, I, I think it's time to put the union on notice, or I'm putting them on notice, that if they give us a contract that does not include some of the things that we, the common council, have been asking for on behalf of our constituency regarding the Buffalo Police Department and their contract, then yes, they will be heavily scrutinized, this contract will be read page by page, paragraph by paragraph, sentence by sentence, every dot, every iota will be read in this contract, and if this is not something that's reflective of what the common council has asked for regarding what the people have told us, then yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wyatt, for putting this out there, and I thank you for this conversation right now, because they need to understand that the leverage and the power that we have, it will be used and exercised moving forward, now that we are particularly and keenly aware of what the community wants from us, thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember, um, Scanlon?
Thank you, um, and again, Corporation Council can correct me if I'm wrong, but just to follow up on what you were saying, if a contract comes to us and we do turn it down, they can go back and negotiate further, but in the interim, they would just continue operating under the previous contract, just so everyone watching is aware.
That's correct, you're correct, sir.
We are all wearing our Corporation Council hats today and correct. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mister, I don't want to go back, I don't mean to go back and forth, but I don't think this is a back and forth, I think this is just us making sure that the public has all the information. Now, like Councilmember, uh, Scanlon just said, if we do enact our authority to send the contract back, because we are not particularly satisfied with what it is that we see, this prolongs the process and they continue to operate under the unsatisfactory contract that they currently have.
It, it, it's not necessarily that is, I'm sorry, Corporation Council?
Um, that is correct, in the sense that the department has to operate under something, so you would never leave them without a contract. And the only contract in closest in time would be the immediate one that they were currently operating under. Um, that's similar like when we have, um, contract coming up to, uh, you know, that is about to expire and we're looking to renegotiate or to have a new extension, um, that normally happens where you will continue the, the existing contract until you can come up with terms and, um, that are agreeable by both parties, offer new contract, um, to start the, the new, um, timeframe for operation.
So that, that, that's all I have, I just want to make sure that we, we addressed the obvious. Um, there is a contract that has not been, uh, I guess, uh, you know, satisfactory to the public for quite some time. And as, um, the councilman of the Maston District, I'll be ensuring that I uh, have several listening sessions that we will include in our monthly stakeholders meetings to ensure that we hear the voice of our constituencies, or so that those issues and concerns can be addressed during, uh, that time. When is such a time comes that we are to vote on updating or renewing the contract with the Buffalo Police Department and the union, thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, next item, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wyatt?
I, I just had a question for Corporation Council, I know that in the past, um, the contract has went without being approved for many years, is that something in the contract itself that allows for it to go for months and years that is not approved until the meeting of the minds come together?
Um, well, there, there, uh, I guess several procedures that takes place whenever there's a renegotiation of a contract. And usually what happens is, um, both parties have determined that they cannot come to an agreement, and one party determines that they are, are at a bypass, impasse, sorry. This is part of, um, what is, um, available within the Taylor Law, so they can find that they're at an impasse and so decide to go to arbitration until they can then come to terms with, uh, you know, positions that both parties can agree upon, so during that interim, what we sometimes have is a, a memo, a memorandum of understanding, you know, certain terms that you, we can at least agree on in order to keep the contract or keep the employees working until we reach to that point where we can come and ratify, you know, a final, um, contract that's pleasing to both parties.
Is, is the Taylor Law, is that federal or state?
Um, the Taylor Law is New York State law, yes.
Thank you.
All right, next item?
Item number sixty seven, Special Run to Pick Up Electronics and Tires.
Motion to adopt the resolves, remainder to C D.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, who has the floor?
Um, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting this, this is something that we talked to Commissioner Finn yesterday during caucus about, um, that, you know, we are having problems in our districts as it relates to electronics being left within our districts as dumping areas along with tires. Um, I know that part of this was done years ago, and they were, they cut off the electronics, number one, not to fill the landfill with electronic uh, equipment, but also as a cost-cutting measure. Um, this, I think, has come to a time where it's almost backfiring on us where people are now, because they don't want to go down to Seneca or where the other locations are dumping things in our neighborhoods, bringing a problem blight. Um, so we, I think that having a special run or creating a time period, maybe every, every other month or whatever the commissioner comes up with, um, can help us with dealing with the blight, because either we deal with it now, or we have to tend to send, to have this impact team go out to pick it up and still pay for us doing what we may have, could have done in, in a scheduled way, so I'm really hopeful they can come up with something really soon, I know, and I talked to some of my colleagues, um, yesterday, and many of them felt that this is a good move, so I hope that, um, we can come up with something that, again, is, is something that we can do for the residents, um, many residents can't get all the way down to Seneca. Um, so if we can have a special run every other month or something, I think could be very helpful in dealing with the dump, illegal dumping and blight that we are experiencing in our neighborhoods, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, as you know, my, one of my highest pet peeves is, um, littering, so I want to remind the public, because these TVs and all this kind of stuff didn't get on the street by themselves. People put them there, um, so if you turn in a dumper and they dumper, uh, and you can get the information and they get fined, you get money, I forgot what the total amount is now, but you actually get paid, and, uh, somebody out there ought to get paid, because I watched a guy the other day, and I just, I ain't have enough time to get his license, um, and I'm not Rich Fontana, so I wasn't gonna chase him down the street, but, uh, watched him, grown-tailed man, dump out on the street, and it's horrible, and then the people say, well, why the city not cleaning it? City shouldn't have to clean it, we, we do, but, uh, and you went in other neighborhoods, you see somebody dumping, you have a fit. So all those litter bugs out there, you, yeah, I got a lot of words for them, because it's one of my pet peeves, shouldn't have started me, Mitch Noakowski.
Mister President, thank you, I would like to first thank your ordinance amendment a few years ago that actually increased the fine for that first, and then the second is I would like to please be added as a cosponsor to this.
Yeah, would, would you please add me as well?
Add me as well.
Uh, can you add me four times, please, add me four times?
Matter of fact, anybody else, uh, in, uh, I've had to clean up stuff the other day from the firecrackers, right over by the church, they go on the empty street, pop the firecrackers that could burn down the house, and then leave the stuff right there, unbelievable. All right, I'll go on, you know, I can preach that, I, I get upset about that, um, is that the last item?
Yes, it is.
Committees?
Announcement of committee meetings, the following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on W W dot Facebook dot com slash V F L O C C. Regular committees, Committee on Civil Service is Tuesday, July fourteen, twenty twenty at nine forty five A M. Committee on Finance following Civil Service is Tuesday, July fourteen, twenty twenty at ten A M. Committee on Legislation is Tuesday, July fourteen, twenty twenty at one P M, and Committee on Community Development is Tuesday, July fourteen, twenty twenty at two P M. Special Committees, Special Committee on Legislation will be Monday, July twentieth, twenty, twenty twenty at nine A M, and only for items already before the Legislation Committee that requires a public hearing.
All right, uh, any announcement, Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mister Chair, it is that time, uh, Maston has regrouped a little bit, and we are happy to announce that last year's drive-through stakeholders meeting was an absolute success. Uh, we gave out a lot of information, a lot of great healthy food for you to take in your car, don't eat and drive, please, don't eat and drive. But again, this Saturday, July. But again, this Saturday, July the eleventh, from nine A M to eleven A M, if you drive past the Dove and Grider Center on Moselle, we will absolutely have a bag of food for you, as well as our newsletter with some other information and some P P E gear. So please stop by again. We also have free bread if you like bread. We have all types of bread that we give away at these meetings as well. But it'll be safe, we'll all be socially distanced, you will be in your car, and if you drive past, stop by, get some of this good food, get information, because remember Maston District is the district that feeds you every month during our monthly stakeholders meeting every month, except the month of June, which we celebrate the Juneteenth, and then the month of November where we actually have a Thanksgiving brunch, but we still feed you and we still give you good information. That's the only month that's not a breakfast. Other than that, I have two, one more announcement. Uh, we're doing coronavirus testing in the District of Maston again. We have partnered with the Rafa Family Medicine Center, and they will be doing three testing at three locations on three different days for your convenience. This is for the entire city of Buffalo to come out and get tested. We are trying to do our part as it relates to contact tracing and ensuring that Buffalo, our curve don't go up. So this Thursday, it will be at the Antioch Baptist Church from one P M to three P M. That is at thirteen twenty-seven, uh, Fillmore. Come into the parking lot, uh, off of either Urban or Fillmore, and there's plenty of space in the parking lot for you to pull up and get tested and then pull out. Please register at rafafamilymedicine dot com front slash testing before you get there. If not, if you are not as technically savvy as you would like to be right now, another announcement coming up later. We will have my staff right there, uh, waiting to register you before you take the test. So that's this Thursday, seven nine twenty twenty, between the hours of one P M and three P M, and then also they will be at the Dove and Grider Center, uh, next week on the sixteenth. That will be on a Thursday as well from one P M to three P M. Then next, the Thursday following, at the, uh, historic sixty Hedley Place. Uh, that's the mansion over there on, on Hedley, right off of Jefferson, uh, from one P M to three P M. We are doing our very best to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be tested, and please, if you have not been tested, get tested, because there are some folks out here who are straight up asymptomatic. Asymptomatic means you don't have the typical symptoms, you don't have the fever, you don't have the tastelessness, you don't have the lack of, uh, smell. There are people that are walking around who may have COVID nineteen who don't know it because they feel fine. So if you have not been tested, please get tested. This is very important, because the rest of us want to get through this and get through the other side of this. So please, get tested, and also please drive through on Saturday at the Dove and Grider Center for our monthly stakeholders meeting. This will be a drive-through meeting, and we'll just give you the information, you can keep it moving, alright? Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this time, and I appreciate you all. Be blessed.
Any other announcements? Or council member Scanlon?
Yeah, can we actually revisit item number six in civil service? I just need to recuse myself of that item.
Oh, should we revisit item number six in civil service?
Second by council member Wyatt.
So we can just have a, a new motion to, uh, recuse the motion, uh, of new approval with me rescind, um, recusing myself.
Motion is now to approve the item with council member, uh, Christopher Scanlon being recused.
We just need a motion to recuse first, and that has to be seconded.
Motion to recuse?
Second by council member Fearletto. That takes care of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council member Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just want to invite, uh, all those who are watching, who are interested in police reform. Um, I will be conducting a, um, meeting with Congressman Brian Higgins tomorrow at six, um, P M that will be live-streamed, um, where you can hear about the House's policing, um, uh, reform, um, because I think right now we're trying to get, um, do reform, but I think we need to know what the federal government and our state elected officials are doing. This will be from the federal side, so Congressman Higgins will be giving us an overview. Um, and I will be just interviewing him, getting that information, as well as sharing what, um, we're doing on the council side. So again, we're arming people with information. Some people are hearing about reform, really don't know what's going on with it, but I think if we can educate the public, um, we get a better citizenry to be involved and be informed about what's going on. It's just not a few people making decisions, it's more. And so I think that um, the movement of folks and protesting has been loud and clear, but now it's time to give them the information, the details behind what we're asking for and what we're trying to accomplish. So again, tomorrow at six P M, on the Honorable Brian Higgins will be giving us information on the House's bill, um, regarding policing. Thank you.
And where is it that they can see?
Right on my Facebook page or on the University District page.
Alright, any other announcements? Majority leader?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by council member Noakowski.